All right, well, I'll apologize to everybody for being technically ignorant. And go ahead and open the meeting since we are at 6:10. And I'm sorry I'm late. All right, moving to item two, approval of minutes from July 1. Everybody had a chance to do that, to review that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, anybody have any problems with it? Hearing no problems, do I hear anybody making motion for approval?
So moved, Bob rates.
All right, second, do I see John Frick raise his hand for a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Did you need any identification of who those voices were?
I have all of the commissioners in attendance, so I'm going to assume that's a unanimous aye.
I think you're safe in doing that.
Thank you.
Moving to item three, open public hearing for consideration changes on the classification for 4812, Highway 290 West. I have seen attached links showing that the applicant has come up with a preliminary idea of what they want to do with the land. And has everybody else been able to review that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Miguel, you were the one that brought this up again with, is that meet your approval?
I brought up the preliminary site plan, this looks like it does meet a preliminary site plan. I never intended to ask for anything other than the preliminary plan.
Okay. Yeah, it's very, very preliminary, but I guess a preliminary could have been drawn up on an applicant or something, you know? I don't know what, if there's any specifics on what preliminary is.
There is, it's, Chairman, that's appendix, it's either appendix B or appendix C to the Land Development Code. And the next appendix, either appendix C or appendix D, covers the full site plan. But this, this is a preliminary plan and it works.
Okay, I noticed that there is a single entrance and exit combining these, when both properties are combined. And it seems to be the farthest away from the intersection of 290 and Sterns that it could possibly be. That certainly helps. On the, on the public hearing, it says that there, it was presentation by the staff, is there anything other than the record we already have?
Commissioner, the applicant has submitted a presentation that was sent to the commission this afternoon and also uploaded. If you'd like, he can go through that presentation, we do have it prepared on the screen if you'd so like to review.
This is Roxy, this is Roxy, the city attorney. Commissioner, if you would, prior to this, can you officially open the public hearing?
I thought I did that. Sure. We will now, here.
Okay, so I'll go into the presentation. It is, as you stated, Commissioner, it is a request from single-family residential to neighborhood commercial. The commission heard the presentation at the last meeting and the item that was missing was a conceptual site plan. As per Commissioner Ward, though, there was discussion of a more in-depth site plan that the applicant has worked with the neighbors and at this point feels a conceptual site plan is sufficient. And I will turn, I'll open up the presentation that the applicant has submitted and Mr. Levy is unmuted if you'll just have me forward in the presentation when you're ready to click to the next slide.
Sure, we can do it that way. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time, staff, residents in attendance. As it was stated, you know, this was a tabled item, per request to provide a conceptual plan, and we did so along with a little bit more of a thorough analysis to kind of present a clear picture. So you can, you can go to the next, next slide. Can I share my screen? Would that be any easier?
That, that would be, let me, let me send this to you. You now have the presentation.
Great, thank you. Is everyone seeing my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I may be looking over toward it just for reference, so. Similar to the last, just want to kind of preview, again, we've been through this, so I'll try to be brief. We were going off the future land use map. It was determined that 4800 was approved by council for the rezoning of neighborhood office contingent upon no access to Sterns, which I will speak to in a few moments. So this tract is going for neighborhood commercial for the future land use map. Just quick overview of potential uses, obviously, in your Land Development Code it does speak to that those permitted uses are provided that there's no nuisance factor to any of the neighborhoods. So obviously, when it comes time for site plan approval for use, those would be taken into account.
Mr. Levy?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm getting a garbled audio, is anybody else?
Yes, kind of static.
From on my end?
Yes.
Yes.
You can't hear me clearly?
That's better.
I can hear you now, yeah.
Per, similar to last, we wanted to kind of show in relation to a natural line of development, the conceptual plan provided, and I'll get to that here on the next slide, was to maximize the allowable impervious coverage and potential square footage of the building for the land use code. So function being that it couldn't ever be any more than what you're seeing here. Obviously, the building could be rotated, there have been raised question or concern around what would happen with these heritage trees, which I will speak to in a few moments as well. And I wanted to show the relationship between this conceptual plan for this specific lot and how it coordinates with the existing plan that we're moving forward on, on this corner. And you can see with this one single driveway access, this would become abandoned here and become a joint use, as we've shown. Now, in this conceptual, you can see there's, there's a couple utility items here along the frontage, which really would drive this entry further down the road, as I show in the next exhibit appropriately. And the abandonment, as you, as we've seen, the abandonment of this driveway in coordination with that. Also, based on scaling of map, we find that not even just from the exit ramp at entry, but at the full merger of the delineation of traffic line, that we are still greater than 425 feet, which meets TechDOT's current standard design code, so there won't be any concern around TechDOT's approval of this in proximity to the exit ramp. We want to show similarly to the other massing and how this is aligned with all the massing that you do find with the commercial along the frontage. And as I had mentioned, and I'll show you briefly, and Ford is on this call as well and can speak as the current POA, as the owner of the property, we've been working through a joint use access easement for the joint driveway, and we've also been working on placing covenant on the property regarding the removal of the heritage trees and restriction of that. Clearly, your Land Development Code already restricts that. However, this would just supersede any potential change in your code should that change in the future, which obviously, we all understand that that would likely never happen. I just wanted to show that we have made a lot of progress with these documents. Ford can speak to it as well, that he has them currently in his possession, they are ready to be executed, notarized, and recorded for, for the city's purpose. I also wanted to show, here is the, regarding the tree, protection of the trees on the property, it was advised per council that it actually be going with deed of the land, so this is to be recorded at the time of any future transaction, sale of the property, but this is the document that would be attached to the property. Just a quick update in relation to 4800, as it is the neighboring adjacent lot, we did get the approval from council. TechDOT has approved the two-way access for that property currently. We have a perpetual restrictive covenant, which is currently in the possession of city staff right now, awaiting signature from a city attorney and the city's mayor, so we can get that recorded. And I have spoken with the neighborhood, the BVN neighborhood, regarding their firewise community plan and how we want to get involved in that process as well, just for updates for you as commission. And this is the restrictive covenant for the 4800 regarding its access, inability to access Sterns Lane. So that, this is what's in the city staff hand as we speak. And that's it, I was trying to keep it brief for you. I do have full versions of those documents, if anyone wants me to pull them up, so you feel free to ask or let me know. Would you like me to keep my screen on share in case anyone has any questions regarding that, or should I go ahead and stop the share?
I think you can stop it because I have a copy of the presentation if we need to go back.
So we'll do citizen comments now, is, is there, Sylvia, you going to handle that?
Yes, I can handle that. So any, if any resident or citizen would like to raise their hand, we will acknowledge you for the record to speak. I have Mr. Terry Cowan, but it looks like you're self-muted.
Good evening, distinguished members of the zoning commission, and good to see you, Aaron, and good to see some of my neighbors on the, in the meeting tonight. In regard to 4812, a particular interest, we, we are, we know that this lot has been master planned for neighborhood commercial. So the use is, seems appropriate, is appropriate for the, for the Sunset Valley master plan. Our concerns have been around traffic, and that was during 4800 and also at 4812. And we're, and I'm, I'm happy to see that the, the plan to have the joint use ingress and egress on the access road moved close, as far away from Sterns Lane as physically possible, and that looks to be the case. We did want to know how the progress is on the easement document that, I think you mentioned it, Aaron, if you could, because, so that we could be assured that this is very likely to, to become reality. Did you speak to that at all?
Yes, as I stated, the document is in Ford's possession, he can attest to that if he speaks this evening. We've reached an agreement on the language, and then now it just needs to be executed for recording. Should we have had it in advance of today in order to do so, we would have provided that, you know, recording number, but it is, you know, ready to be done and it will be done, yeah.
Thanks, and, and the other concern, where, where are the trees? The trees are hundreds of years old, particularly one of them is, is like, I consider it to be like treaty oak was before it was poisoned, the, the famous oak tree in downtown Austin. And so we're particularly happy to see that, that you're providing additional protection to what Sunset Valley has in its ordinances. Ordinances can be changed, we would hope that would never happen, because that ordinance is important to the citizens of Sunset Valley. But by doing this, as you said, it provides this protection for the trees no matter what happens in Sunset Valley. And, and that's, and, and that's a very good item, and we appreciate that.
Are those the two trees closest to the house?
If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could go ahead and zoom in, yeah, that's fine, Sylvia. So I'm moving my cursor, as if you can see it, but you can see Mother's existing house at the, yeah, I saw your, your clicks, so the large green right in front of it toward, toward the 290, that's the main tree. Yes, there, so that's the, that's the major tree. The one off to my left of the house, that one is an older tree, I'm sorry, but not as old as the one that's in, that we just looked at in front. So there used to be two trees there to the left, one had to be removed to, to death and other things, I seem to recall, but, but it's still a nice tree. It's, there's also another one that's, that's being covered up by the proposed, or the building that's, that's being shown, you know, for potential or possible use. So there's actually three beautiful live oaks right in there, the one in front of the house is the, the primary one. Say it forward.
So there would be one taken out, or one that's covered up?
No, again, this is conceptual purpose being to show the full max capacity of what could be built, but if you, you know, building orientation could be changed, the building could be more horizontal, and where you currently see an outside parking could be behind the building between those trees. Obviously, you know, that's a more in-depth study for future development, the purpose of conceptual is just to kind of pave the way of, of, you know, max allowable. So obviously, and, and again, placing the covenant on the property, restricting any removal of heritage tree, and the fact that it's in your Land Development Code, when it comes time for site plan design for approval, that's, you know, obviously going to be the dominant determiner in that situation, so. To answer the, the question about will one be removed, no, there were originally four live oak trees, one has already been removed many years ago, there's still three remaining. The primary one is the one in the front of the house that I, that we first looked at.
Okay, very good, all, all three are on that deed. And, and, and Sunset Valley Code, both. All right, thank you, Mr. Levy, the, uh...
We have one more, we have one more resident, Mr. Gusket, you are self-muted.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for your time, and, you know, I want to make the comment that, you know, there, there has been a lot of dialogue between Aaron Levy and, and Ford Locock and the neighborhood, and, you know, we, we, we like this plan, at least I like this plan, I don't know if I speak for others, but I like this plan. And the thing that I ask Sunset Valley is, is to follow through on the restrictive covenants that have been offered up and to, to make sure that those are in place as part of the whole process. We feel those are very important and in calming the concerns of the neighborhood, particularly with restriction of access to Sterns and also the joint use driveway and the protection of the trees. So with those things in place, to ensure that, you know, a plan like this is the only plan that can move forward, we would feel a lot, a lot better about it and we would support it.
All right, thanks, sir. Sylvia, are there any written comments that you need to enter into the record?
We do have two written comments, Matt, can you bring those up?
Or do you want me to just read them?
Yes, please.
So from the letters we sent out to property owners within 500 feet, as per Land Development Code, we had one returned. Hold on just one moment. Greg Charalambou on, at 3217 Barton View, so not a Sunset Valley resident, but a Barton View neighborhood resident, objects, saying, "I live a few hundred feet from this property and I believe rezoning it for neighborhood commercial will threaten my safety and security." And then there was one comment submitted to the Open Town Hall. I can read that as well. It's from Jean Wilkins, written August 4th.
Hey, Matt?
Oh, she's on the meeting. So if she wants to speak, she can, she can, sorry, Jean.
Jean, you're self-muted, if you want to speak, please unmute yourself, there you go.
Okay, I can summarize it, my, my position has been very clear, we've talked a lot with Ford and Aaron about this. Of course, as soon as the resident's property changes to neighborhood commercial, the resident will lose that 80-foot protection. And I, I just hope that every conceivable measure is put into place so that that 80 feet difference, which is, you know, bottom line what it's going to be, you know, it's, it's instead of 100 feet, that they would have to build it 20, given, you know, the situation as is, but as soon as the property changes to neighborhood commercial, you know, that 80-foot buffer, which is designed in code to protect residents, it, it goes away and just whatever can be done, I think, needs to be done to minimize any impact on the current resident. The other issue is, you know, there is, and this is for later on, but I mean, I think it's something that y'all need to be aware of, you know, there is that cave that's, that's right across the street, and so later on, when you get into more of a design plan, there are geological features in, in this area, and I mean, they really can't be ignored. And that, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right, Sylvia and Matt, that's all that was written, submitted written, in writing?
Yes, sir. And I do not see anyone else that has their hand raised virtually to speak.
Okay, thank you. All right. Going to go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to item four and deliberating the presentation that we just discussed.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm for it. Aaron, I was curious, I'm going to move, is everybody seeing my pointer here on the road, you don't see it? Okay, well...
All right, I would need to share the screen, where...
Okay, I'm going to touch your little pointer there and move it to the driveway coming
Here, this driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this, I'm just curious here, first off, I don't really know where this cave is she's talking about, I'd like to see where that is too, but see the, where the water retention pond is there, that driveway seems to be pretty close to that one corner of it right here, I don't know, can you move your arrow down? Right over here? Right there, see the corner of it?
This driveway, this is not a functioning driveway.
I think you're being a little too literal in this current situation, I mean, you can see the existing driveway in this image as well, there's a black asphalt that runs toward the building that's being shown. I think if you go back, obviously, you know, a driveway location is, is going to have to meet the requirement of, of the code, and, and you can't have aprons that extend beyond property bound. So, you know, I think, I think there's a literal translation that doesn't need to be taken in this exact little sketch done right here.
Well, I realize this is preliminary, but at the same time, it looks like there's a 20-foot building line from...
It's a 50-foot building line? Yeah.
Yes.
Out on the side of the property?
There's a driveway going right down that, does that need to be maintained for any kind of access to the retention pond for any reason, like if it starts flooding or needs?
No, no, they have their own access, that should, this is...
And where is that, isn't that, that little driveway?
That driveway is Ms. Angelie's current driveway that you see in this overhead view image, and the location of future driveway would basically be at the same location except for, you know, the appropriate width per design for, for the traffic.
Okay. I, I just don't know what the, any requirements are for access to a retention pond and having a building getting that close, that was, that was my only thing, I was just kind of curious about that. Okay. Mr. Locock, I see you wanted to speak.
Mr. Locock, you're self-muted.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
So I don't know about the laws, but the mother's current driveway is, as you see right there, it goes literally three to four feet from the fence that was built for the retention pond. There is access gates off of 290, you can see the drives there off 290, and the ramp is barely being seen on the left side. There's another access point from the Holiday and Express for the back portion of the retention pond with the ramp, so there are no access points off of 4812.
That was my only question.
Hold on, Jean, I, we've, we've left the public comments part of an item three, and we're on item four now, where it's just the, just the committee members discussing it.
I was going to answer where the cave is.
Across the highway?
Yeah, it's where you can see that tree line, it's where the highway splits. If you're actually up on that highway moving towards like Central Market, all of a sudden you can see the tops of tree lines, that's, that's where the cave is, it's a... It's a it's got a guard rail in it so people can't get into it. You'd need a little bit wider view.
I can see it there.
Right there, down at the bottom left. That the other one was better. The the view she just had up was better. It's it's exactly across from the, yeah, right there, right in the bottom left where those trees are. That's a cave opening. That's why they had to split the highway right there, if you've ever wondered. Yeah, that's it. There's a cave. It's got a grate on it so you can't get in it anymore. Ford and I both been residents, longtime residents, pretty much have all been in it.
All right, committee members, anybody else have further questions or concerns?
This is Commissioner, this is Commissioner West. I don't.
Well, that surprises me.
I have I have one question. This is Commissioner Reitz. I see a a track around the other, is that new? I don't think I've seen that before.
That was the the amenity added for residential.
That's always that's always been part of that site plan. It's a walking trail. So, yeah, no, that's not new. It might just be a little bit highlighted by the way that I've done it on this image. That's all.
Okay. Is that for tenants? Interesting.
No, it it's it's the purpose being trying to creating more amenity for the community. As I said, any of the open space as well as this trail, you know, is meant to be utilized by the community.
Very good. Thank you. That's all. Looks great. I like the new driveway.
All right.
One, one thing on the on that driveway and the parking there. Could you go back? Yeah. So to get into the 4812 building, you would go in and then come back out the same way, right?
Sylvia, can you go to the conceptual plan on the next go up? Again, this is conceptual, so a location of the parking could be to the side of the building as we've shown it. The building could be rotated more in parallel with the street and could be behind the building. So you do go through and under the building for parking, just similar to the adjacent lot. They, you know, it's the only way to accomplish the required parking and the meet the limited impervious coverage.
But there's only going to be one curb cut for the 48.
That is correct. And that was, you know, a combination of working through 4800's concerns with the neighbors on lack of access to sterns and then creating a safer traffic flow where there's only one driveway rather than two along the 290 access.
All right, John, I'll answer your question.
Oh, yes.
All right, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion on this subject.
I move that Commissioner Reitz, I move that we approve the zoning change as proposed.
I'll second that. Commissioner Boozer?
This is Commissioner Warta. Commissioner Reitz, would you consider the motion for recommending to council that the zoning be changed rather than us? We we don't, we don't make that that decision. Actually, we just make the recommendation.
I, the, my motion is revised pursuant to that suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let me ask you also if we should mention the the deed restriction in in our motion.
I don't think it's, this Commissioner Reitz, I don't think it's necessary since that is, I think he said it was already been signed. So that's of, that's the parties are bound by that. And I may, I believe it's the city has a right to enforce it.
The, I I believe you said it was on Mr. Locock's desk and and had not been signed yet.
Uh, to be to be clear, the what's in cities' possession for signatures, the covenant of restriction of access to sterns regarding 4800. Regarding 4812, Mr. Locock currently has in his possession, as do I and mine, the joint use access easement and agreed maintenance of that easement. Those documents are to be recorded and signed. And then as far as the restriction of the deed, again, he has that in his possession, but that is triggered by conveyance of land. So I don't know how it would get, I mean, I can speak with counsel as far as the ability to record that in advance of such, but I don't know if there's a way to do so. And maybe Roxy as an attorney could shed some light, but I I'm not an attorney, so clearly I don't know.
So we have an attorney on the.
Yes, Roxy is on.
Yes, hear me? Yeah, most likely that would have to be part of the conveyance, part of the transaction between the buyer and the seller. And that's when it would be recorded. But also, I believe Mr. Levy indicated that part of the code does include the preservation of those trees within that area anyway. Is that correct, Mr. Levy? The 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 trees that you're talking about?
Yes, the the code does cover it and Ford has agreed as just a reassurance to the neighbors because there seems to be some concern around the ability of the code to enforce it to to place the deed restriction on the property. But like you just stated, and as I was advised by my counsel, the draft of what's been provided to Ford is that it is upon conveyance of land. That's when the deed restriction is recorded. It can't necessarily be recorded in advance unless you see another way. But but the document has been created and I've presented it. And I can share that as, you know, Mr. Locock is welcome to share as well.
Well, Roxy, so it's it's your opinion that we don't need to include that in the motion?
I believe that the preservation of those trees is currently covered by the land development code and the ordinance is in place. As I see it, the restriction that would happen between the transaction between Mr. Levy and Mr. Locock would just be an additional safeguard for those trees. So it it may, it's up, it's gonna, I can't make that decision. It's going to be ultimately up to the the zoning commission to make that recommendation and then the city council to do that. But it is covered currently by the land development code, as I understand the presentation from Mr. As I understand the the way that the the presentation was done.
I I do want to be clear, there is no conveyance of land from Mr. Locock to myself. We are not purchasing this property. This is, that's left to be determined by Mr. Locock and his family, how and when they develop the land. It is just, it's, it's, we wanted to provide documentation to show that it's prepared to to create the deed restriction upon conveyance of land, you know, to satisfy the concerns. But as you said, it is covered by the code.
All right, I'll I'll back off on that. So we have a a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
One last thing. On your quick update, you say that Tech Dot has approved a two-way access to the property. So that is talking about what exactly?
That's regarding 4800. I'm just trying to update Commission on the process of what happened in the approval of the adjacent lot that we are developing currently. There was, we had an approval for one-way traffic flow. It was brought up by council through the conversation with public that we determined a restricted access, no access to sterns. And in doing so, we followed up with Tech Dot, got the approval for a two-way access. And and now, like stated previously, the city currently has in its possession the restrictive covenant for signatures to not allow for access to sterns. So that was just an update regarding the adjacent land. It has nothing to do with this property.
So what does the city have from Tech Dot?
We provided the approval from Tech Dot from the reviewer who did the this review on 4800. 4812 has an updated memo from the traffic engineer stating exactly such and and what would be required for, you know, future design of traffic count. And they also stated that the joint, future joint use was approved and recommended by Tech Dot.
And the city has this, you said? All right. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? So let's call the vote. Sylvia, would you do the roll call?
Yes, please. Chairman Skewus.
Yes.
Commissioner Boozer?
Yes.
Commissioner Frick?
Yes.
Commissioner Warta?
Yes.
Commissioner Reitz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, before we adjourn, is there a plan to have another zoning meeting this month?
There is not. As far as we know, no one else is, there's nothing else that should be on the agenda.
We we could not meet, we could not meet the posting deadline at this point. I will, I will put the commissioner commissioners on notice. We have a council member who's wanting to put together impact fees. And so we will be looking at land development code as well as currents and future land use maps. So there there will be stuff on your radar in the next couple of months.
Okay, but at least September.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to adjourn the meeting if there is a motion to do so.
Commissioner Reitz, I'll move.
Commissioner West, a second, the motion.
You'll call the roll on this one too, Sylvia?
All those in favor, just say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I promise to do better next time on the technical side.
You're okay. Hopefully, we'll be meeting in person at some points in the near future.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Thank you.